July Meeting of Council to order. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I know that presence of a forum. Do you concur?
I confirm the presence of a forum.
Okay. And we have an agenda before us. Are there any questions or changes to be made to the agenda?
I do have a question about the agenda.
Yes ma'am.
And removing the resolution and substituting the subsequent resolution. And I can discuss this in my report, or we could talk about it now procedurally, whether or not that motion that got this resolution on the agenda can be tabled and sent back to the committee. If you want to do it at the end of the meeting, that's fine.
Shall we do that in your committee report?
We can do that.
Would that make sense?
Okay.
Okay, great. So we'll make a note to do that for sure at that time. Then there is a public hearing this evening regarding the property of 555 Albion Avenue. Our Planning Commission has heard an application from that property owner. David, would you explain this to us and give us background as to what the application is and where planning stands?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Back in, well, back earlier this year in May, the Society of the Transfiguration, the owners and operators of Bethany School at 555 Albion, submitted an application to amend a previously approved conditional use. In 2017, a portion of the property on the school grounds near the southeast corner between the parking lot and the cafeteria building was designated in the original 2017 conditional use as a grassy play area. It currently houses the kickball field for Bethany. And their intention is to amend the conditional use to recreation area, which would allow for the installation of playground equipment, so traditional metal playground like we have at Summit Park. Same manufacturer, actually, I believe, that changed in the use because they are going from an unimproved grassy surface to a play surface. Village has been in contact with their stormwater engineers as well as climbers to review the data that they presented on this and will verify that it is satisfactorily handling the stormwater and the change in use is required because it was a previously approved conditional use.
Okay. And where is planning on this?
Thank you. Yes, this evening at Planning's council meeting, or Planning's meeting, they passed a resolution recommending approval of the amendment to council without condition.
Okay. All right. So now it's before council?
Mm-hmm.
Are we looking for a voice vote on this or a motion first?
For council's knowledge, Ms. Olga Grab from the Society of Bethany School is present. Happy to answer any questions about the application.
Good.
But I'm also happy to as well.
Okay. So are there questions about this particular application?
I have just a different one. How are the neighbors with this?
Two neighbors requested drawings and their application copy and made no comments. There was, I believe, one question at the meeting about the play surface that was answered to resident satisfaction at the previous council, or previous planning meeting.
Residents on Pedro?
No, I believe it was an Albion resident. My memory is failing me on which specific resident. But no, there have been no...
No objections.
No outpouring of support or objection to the application.
Okay.
It's clearly an expensive project, half a million dollar playground.
It's a pretty nice playground.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any concerns about the water, about the drainage now that Bethany's done the entire?
Right. So they provided drawings with data on the surface, play surface. It is a combination of turf and the engineered mulch that has been designed. And there is a bed underneath that that is designed to mitigate stormwater runoff. So it'll absorb, it'll be piped into the existing underground basins. And then their engineer, who is the same engineer that worked with the village on the Bio-Swale project and the Albion-Pedro project, Eric DeWalt, is working on this project and has been in contact with climbers on the design to make sure that it does not have any negative impact on stormwater on the property.
Okay. Anything else?
How was the final vote for?
It was unanimous for... So again, is this a voice vote?
So it'll be a verbal resolution before council and then have a formal resolution memorializing. This will be council's official decision this evening and then a resolution essentially putting it to paper next month.
All right. I think so. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule for this?
Do we need a motion in the second?
We should have a motion in a second, yes.
So moved.
Second.
I would close the public hearing first.
Close the public hearing?
Before voting?
Before voting.
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, on advice from the lady that knows everything, we'll officially close the public hearing and return to the council meeting for our motion and vote. So now that we're back in the council meeting, is there a motion for this application for an amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
For verbal resolution 2025-35, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cridler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So next week, or next month, there'll be an official
Correct.
resolution that we'll adopt. But for now, that's position of council.
Yep.
So it's approved.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the prior month's meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next, what I'd like to do is move forward in the agenda. Our ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale Volunteer Firefighters, ordinance 2025-35. So Chief, would you please tell us a little bit about these candidates?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Introduced to you Zach Anderson first. He's a recent graduate of Oak Hills High School and Scarlet Oaks Fire Academy. He currently comes to us with a firefighter two card as well as his EMT. For the last four years, he's been a cadet with the Delhi Township Fire Department. So definitely has some experience and knowledge coming to us, so we're excited to have him. The next firefighter coming to us is Cameron Bartlett. Cameron's coming back to us after being gone for two years and we're happy to have him back. He'll be a great addition, has plenty of experience and currently he's enrolled in EMT school with a completion date of August. So we'll help him get through that as well.
This August?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. Yes, thank you. And then our last candidate for tonight is Malik Perry. Malik is currently enrolled in an EMT class at Cincinnati State with a completion date of this August as well. So these folks will be carded very, very soon and be able to help us out. We are excited to have all three of them on tonight.
Okay. Sounds great. So is there a motion for ordinance 2025-35?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And just in case, I think I failed to read the entire ordinance into the minutes, but an ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale Volunteer Firefighters, establishing a one-year probationary period and declaring an emergency. So we have a motion and a second for the ordinance and for dispensing the three reads. Would you please call the rule?
Absolutely. For ordinance 2025-35, Ms. Mosenko, sorry, to dispense with the three reads. Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cridler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-35, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cridler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Could I please have all the volunteer candidates come up here in the front row? Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name and hereby swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge
I will faithfully and impartially discharge
the duties of volunteer firefighter for the Village of Glendale
The duties of volunteer firefighter for the Village of Glendale.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you, Joe. All right, moving on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council? Okay, hearing none? Public comment?
Wait.
Oh. I don't think so.
Public comment?
Okay. So we'll move on.
Did they hear?
Yeah.
I don't think they...
Oh, is there anyone that wishes to address council for public comment? None? Okay.
Okay.
Do, Mr. Parrish?
Good evening. I'm Glenn Parrish. Yeah, another one of those. And there's more to come, but I just relocated back to the village. I grew up here, as you might know from my previous standing before you. I'm at 100 Washington Avenue, which is in the historic district. It's a small house and it's really, if I was a bachelor, it would be, it would be great, but I'm not. And so I decided to use that as my, because I am a contractor. And I will use that as my remote office because most of my work is not done from one place. It's like I'm getting ready to go to Florida, so that should be... But my, I have a problem with the property lines. I requested at the last meeting for a survey of the property next door at 94 Washington Avenue, which belongs to the village. And I was, and I asked if there was an existing survey, just so that I could see what my property line was because I'm right up against Washington Park and I know where Washington Park is. So I was promised that survey, but I haven't gotten it yet. I checked with Columbus and there was no survey at the state or in the county. My problem with this is because the GIS and the Google Earth shows 94 Washington Avenue, it shows the property line actually touching the side of my property. And I don't mean just touching, but it's closer than the paint. And there is a portion of my property which has been added on to, which is an entrance to the basement. And that was existing and it has been existing for probably more than 25 years. I also noticed that the maintenance of a portion of 94 Washington Avenue has been maintained by 100 Washington Avenue. I took Google Earth all the way back to 2000 and that's how long it's been that the property was being maintained. I didn't go any further than that because I know that before that, because I know the people who live there, that that property was being maintained by 100 Washington Avenue. That creates a problem. Two of them really. One is that I need to establish that property line so that we can move forward with resolving any issues of encroachment. And there are ordinances that cover that, but at this time, I really can't speak intelligently until I receive a survey from the owner, the Village of Glendale. And so again, I come before you requesting that survey since Glendale does own the property.
You have about a minute.
Excuse me?
You have about a minute. There's a five-minute limit for public comment.
Since I have a minute, maybe perhaps I'll just sing a song. No. No, I won't. This is serious business because I want to develop my property. This is serious business, because I want to develop my property in accordance with the ordinances that are existing at this time. Uh, and I would like to do some improvements according to the, uh, uh, ordinances that are due, that are in place at this time. So, again, I make that request to receive a survey of the property that is at ninety-four Washington Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Anyone else wishing to address council? Hearing none, okay. Now we'll move on to our reports. Mayor, Village Administrator, Standing Committee, Treasurer, Clerk, Fiscal Officer.
Excuse me? I, I'm here.
Oh, yes.
Is there any discussion on my, um, request?
There is typically not. The, um, public comment is an opportunity for residents to come and address council on issues that are of concern to them. But normally, there is no back and forth question-answer. It's just an opportunity for you to, to express to council what's on your mind. I've taken some notes of the comments you've made. I think, uh, and I can address part of this within the mayor's report as well, because I was in the planning meeting and, uh, uh, listened to what planning's advice was. And any of this concerns that you have, I know David's already taken notes, and he can be in touch with you, or you can be in touch with him as to some of the questions you've asked. Most of what you were, uh, asking are, are things that council really would not typically deal with anyway. And I, and, and I'll, I'll put this in my report, and you'll probably understand where that's coming from, so, um, sure, for, for the mayor's report, um, I had several items, but I can just start with the comments that were made here. In, some of the same, uh, issues came up in our planning meeting, uh, concerns Mr. Parrish has about his property. So regarding a survey, uh, David has looked, we don't see a village survey. However, typically, when someone wants to survey a property, they get their own survey. And that's always advisable, you don't want to rely on someone else's survey. You want to get your own surveyor by a surveyor who is working for you, and, um, that's the normal way for that to happen. As far as the encroachment issues, I think David said he was going to look into that. And then regarding any development of property, uh, it was advised by the Planning Commission that you, uh, that, that anyone that wants to develop a property familiarize themselves with current ordinances. And after they've done that, they can bring any ideas they have for developing the property to Mr. Lumsden, our administrator. From there, Mr. Lumsden can kind of give some guidance as to whether or not it's possible to do what the property owner wants to do, and, uh, what requirements there are based on current zoning, what you can and cannot do with properties. So, that in a nutshell was some of planning's comments, and, and those are the same comments now that I can relate to your concerns. As far as the rest of the mayor's report, um, in the village, there were no births, births reported this month. And, uh, there were two, two deaths. David Roland Bomer, I think I'm saying that right, passed away May thirteenth at age eighty-one. And Rick, uh, W. Combs, a former, former Glendale Police Chief, passed away July one at the age of seventy. Uh, for those two, uh, individuals, can we please have a moment of silence? May they rest in peace. There is, uh, uh, there were several events that occurred in the village in the month of June. The Glendale Gathering of Historical and Collector Vehicles, uh, was held on June twenty-second. Uh, roughly ninety cars and motorcycles were present for that show. It was a great event, a little too hot, but I think everybody otherwise had a very good time, um, and it was very successful. Later that evening, the Cincinnati Civic Orchestra celebrated their twentieth performance, uh, on the village square. They played their all-time favorites, which was some great music. I was there for part of it, but was very tired after the car show and had to exit early. They're led by Maestro Larry Bonhos and, and really coordinated in such a huge way by his wife Hildy. And they were recognized for their twenty years of service to the village, uh, before that concert took place. So that was a very nice event. Uh, there was a Juneteenth celebration. Uh, it was a partnership between, uh, Eckstein Cultural and Art Center and Landmark Church over in Woodlawn. Uh, the event was on June nineteenth, and it was very well-attended, large, large crowd. And then finally, Lieutenant Greg Barber was awarded, uh, the Crisis Intervention Team Officer of the Year Award. This was granted by the Mental Health of America, uh, Chapter of Northern Kentucky and Southwest Ohio. It's a very high honor, it's in recognition of some of the work that Lieutenant Barber did during the year. Uh, a couple of incidents that were in particular highlighted at that, uh, award ceremony. So we're very proud of Lieutenant Barber. I think, Chief, was it one or two years ago that our department received that award?
We received it, Department of the Year, two years.
Department of the Year, which, which is great. So, our police force is not only maintaining law and order, they're being very sensitive to the needs of residents and individuals as they go about their law enforcement duties. It's a fantastic honor. Let's see, uh, the Glendale Fire Department, uh, will have their summer camp, uh, starting July twenty-second through to twenty-fifth. Registration is still open until July tenth, so hurry up if you want your kids to attend. It's a great, uh, great thing for kids. Uh, Glendale ICM Summer Camp, uh, will be Tuesday through Friday in July, uh, during the month of July. Nine-thirty in the morning till one in the afternoon for ages kids six through thirteen. Uh, Christ Church will host a Senior Life Planning Seminar on July eighth, five to six P.M., that's tomorrow. And, uh, the Glendale Water Works Commuter, Consumer Confidence Report is now available on the website. It was just finished, I think it was in the Friday newsletter, you can click on a link there, or just go to the website. And that is it for the mayor's report. Mr. Lumsden, do you have a, an administrative report?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Pretty heavy report this month, so I'm gonna go through it very quickly. Uh, copy has been provided to you, and then, um, an additional publication will go out this week that expands on these in detail for, uh, residents and members of the public to understand some of the infrastructure work that we've had going on over the last few weeks. Uh, been a very, very, very busy last few weeks here in the village. Water main on Forest Fountain and Ivy Avenues is complete. All connections were made by mid-June, so all the houses on that main are on that new, are totally on the new main, and the old main has been abandoned. Um, there were two properties that took advantage of the service line replacement opportunity that was provided by the village's contractor. The condition of the streets on Forest Fountain and Ivy, um, Forest's restoration will be completed in the next two weeks, very likely much sooner than that. The crew moved over to Albion to get started on that, so that we could be sensitive to Bethany School's calendar and make sure that the school had water supply before they have to open for the new year. But I've relayed to them that the importance of finishing the forest patch is, is, uh, very, very high, and they've indicated they'll get to that as, uh, this week or next. So that should be completed very shortly. Then later this summer, the village is going to contract with a paving contractor to go through Forest Fountain and Ivy and make spot repairs to certain areas that are worse than, than not. The, uh, goal being to essentially have a short-term improvement on those streets in advance of a plan to fully repave them in twenty-twenty-six. So that, that is upcoming, uh, this, this summer or fall, as weather and time permits. The Albion Avenue Water Main is underway right now. Uh, they've turned the corner from Albion to Short Albion, and they're working on installing that main, um, as we speak. Anticipate that that main will be ready for testing at the end of this week, which means then we'll move to, uh, service line connections. Once that's done, the letters for residents who are interested, who might be interested in a service line replacement have been sent out to those, those properties specifically. And then, of course, repaving is scheduled to follow the completion of the Water Main. Water Main completion is mid to late August. August twenty-second is the current target date, and then repaving in, uh, end of August or early in September. We, um, made two repairs to the water system this month. The first was a leak outside of the village office. The water fountain across from Harry Whiting Brown's side door was found leaking into a sanitary sewer, and that was able to be quickly patched and, and closed, and it stopped that, um, within, within the afternoon that we discovered it. So, glad we got that one tackled, and then the valve at Erie and Congress has been completely replaced. And both those projects were completed by the Utilities Department without the need for outside contractors. The Erie repair was completed using our new backhoe, and has been a tremendous benefit for, uh, the village to get that work done. The cost for that project was very, very small, miscellaneous tools and things, because we had the valve and the equipment in stock that we needed to make that replacement ourselves. So, going, heading in that direction of doing more work internally is, is gonna be a long-run benefit for, for the village. And then finally, as we'll talk about tonight, ODOT is planning a repaving of Congress Avenue throughout the entire village, as well as Route Four in the village, for next spring and summer, uh, which is, of course, a, a little bit of a blow to our plan to replace the Congress Avenue Water Main in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Uh, ODOT's restoration requirements are a lot stricter and a lot more specific than, uh, the ones that we're doing on Forest Fountain and Ivy currently. And the cost to do that is, is higher than our current restoration. So, in the meantime, we will be replacing valves along Congress with new valves that actually function. Good number of them are stuck open at this point. So, those new valves will help isolate breaks or leaks and allow for easier repair without so many residents being disrupted with water service interruptions. And that work will also take place by our Utilities Department employees. Lot of work going on, very, very busy, and, as I said, more information coming out to residents this week on all these projects. Thank you.
Surprising, Congress is gonna, I mean, they repaved that like ten years ago. I mean, that road is like pristine, except for that little part that we just patched.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What a waste of money.
Seems like it, I wish they hold off a little bit so we catch up with the main.
Can I just
Yeah.
add one thing? Thank you for, uh, over the weekend, we had some vandalism. Took out the, the safety railings of the foot bridges along Morse. So, thank you, the, the, the guys were there bright and early this morning, um, fixing the railing stuff. So it's safe, again, thank you.
Hopefully they stop.
Thank you for doing
And repair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why someone would choose those to vandalize, but
Has that happened before?
Never. I've never seen it.
It's ridiculous. Actually, I got somebody ran into it. Complaint yesterday.
No.
Several of them were knocked, I don't know. Anyway. It's dark, it's lonely back there, I mean, yeah.
So anyway, thank you, um, for getting
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
David, could you please clarify on Forest, what, what, what's happening in the next two weeks versus later this summer?
Yeah, so in the next two weeks, there's an existing, the restoration for where they dug for the new Water Main, there's about an inch or two-inch dip
Yeah.
in that, that will be filled with asphalt. What's happening later this summer is spot repair. Spot is a little minimizing. It's large areas, sections that are either, uh, worn out or potholes, dips, those kinds of things. That work will take place later this summer. So the restoration, that final cap of asphalt, that will be what happens in the next two weeks.
Okay.
It'll be a much, it'll be a smoother ride then, but then following the repair work this summer and fall, it'll be an even smoother ride, and then, you know, looking forward to repaving in the next, next year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for David? We'll move on to committee reports. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call up the committee reports?
Finance
I'm sorry, just, Mr. Parrish.
Who asked if we had a question for him regarding
No, 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 the public comment, uh, part of the meeting is over. We're now in the council meeting. So, we'll, we're working as council at this point. All right.
Uh, Finance Committee, please.
Finance did not meet in June.
Good luck, easy. Fire Committee, please.
Um, Fire Committee met on June seventeen. The minutes are on the website now, if you wanna go look at it, but, uh, key, key things we covered. We talked about some of the, um, the bourbon hydrants that still need to be replaced. They are, um, they are scheduled to, um, be finished, the bourbon ones anyway, at, um, when the Water Main work on Albion is complete, and that's expected to be the end of August, beginning of September, right? And the other big piece of information that we covered in the meeting was the fire truck will be finished and ready to be delivered to us on September eleventh. Ta-da! And that is, oh, and one other thing, we're working on, um, check your calendars on this one. A sta, uh, setting a, a next meeting for the seventeenth of July at three-thirty. So, look at your calendars and see if you can do that, and let me know offline. But other than that, over to Assistant Chief Lehrman.
Thank you. Our runs were up a slight tick this month, uh, mainly due to some storm damage that came through, uh, earlier in the month. So, um, you'll see those numbers in Chief's report. He's still working on that, and he'll get that to you as soon as he can. And I think we've been really busy this month, um, with training. Uh, we've been training with our mutually partners, as well as in-house training. So we've been out in the village quite a lot over the last several weeks, uh, doing some training. Uh, we've attended, uh, several village events, like the mayor had mentioned. We were at the car show cooking, uh, hot dogs, hamburgers, it was a real good success for association, as well as we have been at the, uh, Summer Concert Series on Saturday's Grilling Out for that, and that's been a success for us as well. Uh, recently, um, we just submitted for a, um, fire safety inflatable house through FEMA. If you saw it at our summer camp last year that we borrowed from a neighboring department, we've submitted for our own. Um, our costs on this would be, if we were awarded the grant through FEMA, would be about three hundred and twenty-five dollars for an eight-thousand-dollar inflatable house that we can use to teach kids fire safety, um, for, at the schools, at our firehouse, during public safety events and things of that nature. So, uh, we'll see if we're awarded that, um, later this year. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Laws and Claims, please.
Thank you. The Laws and Claims Committee did meet, uh, June fourth, and we discussed a variety of topics. Specifically, uh, we revisited the issue of the junk and debris ordinance, and whether or not any changes needed to be made, and it was a decision not to continue to pursue that, that there, that the language that is currently in the code for that, uh, under the, under, um, that issue, those issues, um, seems to be adequate. And so, uh, we did not make any changes, and there were no proposed changes. Um, we also will need to continue to work on council rules regarding a separation of some language that, um, our clerk pointed out regarding the separation of clerk, clerk of council, uh, separating out clerk and finance director based on, uh, the proposed change to the position of, um, treasurer. And, uh, those still need to be, we still need to go through that. Last thing I'll, I'll bring up is the, um, uh, issue of the amendment to council, uh, council rules regarding clarity on, on the, uh, Ohio Public Meetings Act. The committee proposed language to facilitate better communication among committee member, or council members. The committee unanimously voted, uh, to, and proposed language, um, to amend Rule thirty-seven of Council Rules. Uh, I did circulate that language to non-committee members to, uh, for, uh, review and, and consideration at, for this meeting. Uh, Friday's agenda had the, uh, resolution that was drafted by Mr. Lumsden, uh, on, on the agenda, and, uh, today that i- issue was pulled, the resolution was pulled. I think procedurally, uh, our committee, um, should, uh, revisit that issue. Otherwise, I mean, I, I'm not entirely sure procedurally, under our rules, how we just take something off the agenda and it goes away. I don't think we can do that. And, uh, I will say that, uh, with respect to Kathy Ryan, she submitted a, uh, or circulated a legal opinion. I received it today, I think around two o'clock. I really hadn't been able to go through it in much detail, and certainly the, the committee hasn't been able to discuss it, its impact on our work from the last committee meeting. And, uh, so I'm gonna make a motion to table the issue and refer it back to count, or, excuse me, back to committee for further discussion, and with reference to, uh, Ms. Ryan's, uh, opinion on, on the line for further discussion and with reference to Ms. Ryan's opinion on, on the language. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table that and refer it back to council. Sorry, committee, keep saying that.
I, I would second that. If that, if that's the process that's needed within this discussion, it sounds like it is, so.
I don't, I don't know, it's not on the agenda. But to bring it back to committee, I think is totally appropriate.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that, you know, we'll all have an opportunity then to consider it with, we understand that, you know, Kathy has some concerns about it. She is, you know, obviously has to do with risk management here and, but we simply have not had a chance to review and discuss it. And I think that it's appropriate for the committee to do that, so.
Very good. I agree.
Do we have to vote or?
I think, do we vote, like, no motion, okay, well, then we don't.
I would go ahead and do that since we did have one draft out that had it on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to vote, to.
Just a voice vote.
Voice vote to table. So there's a motion and a second to table. All right, so Madam Clerk, would you just please?
Well, it's to table and, and send back to committee.
A voice vote. Does it need to, can it just be a voice, I don't have to call and roll, do I? Nope, okay, so all in favor of doing that, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, so that will be tabled and brought back to committee.
Good, okay, thank you, Mayor. One last thing I want to mention is a, a quick update on the Glendale Legacy Foundation. There have been some concerns and some resident issues with the foundations. The foundation has not had its nonprofit status and, and, excuse me, tax exempt status approved through the IRS. Vice Chair Chris Monzel has been in touch with Senator Husted's office and they will work with him, or we will work with them and try to expedite this. The, the initial application was filed in March, as you know, and here we are, it's July. It's typically eight months, but there's no reason not to be able to expedite it. And I think it's, you know, something that in order to encourage donors and other givers who, who want to make contributions to the, to the foundation, it's important to get that out and finalized.
Yes, I think that's very important as well. And thanks to the foundation, Legacy Foundation Group for all their work. To be clear, it does take a while to get this approval from the federal government. It has to go through several hoops there. Once it is approved, any donation that is made after the March one filing date, retroactively is approved under the five oh one C three status that we anticipate. So unless something goes very wrong, there, there, there should be no problem claiming a tax benefit for any gift that's given. What we've run into recently is many donor advised funds are reluctant to release the funds without the official five oh one C three approval, which we do anticipate. So hopefully we'll get this all wrapped up before the end of the year.
Yeah, exactly, and it's perception problem and awareness problem.
It is.
And so, yeah, exactly.
Well, there, there's a mechanics piece too.
Yes.
Part of the foundation is supporting the purchase of the new fire truck. The fire truck has come in.
September.
September.
This is true.
The village will have to pay the bill.
Yes.
Can then the village accept money in reimbursement to the fire truck?
Yes, we can.
You think so?
We can receive money, yes, is, is, yes.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's slated for payment for the fire truck, so.
Correct. I think the, the, the problem will be we'll have to, for gifts that come later, we will have to put out that amount of cash. But I think a gift can be received after we have paid for the truck and there's no problem with that.
Okay.
I did seem to remember, I was under the impression that the build date for the truck was nine eleven and delivery date was October sometime.
Yeah, there was, that's been.
There's an extra month, I found.
Okay, well, maybe that's so, that would be good, so.
No, it was in, so the, the minutes were actually adjusted to reflect that new piece of information. It says, after the meeting, Chief Yetter received a clarification on the timing of the fire truck. The truck is now in production, because we originally thought it was. It is now in production. It will be finished and ready to deliver to the dealer on September eleven.
Okay.
That was a new thing, you didn't.
I didn't.
Anything else from laws committee?
That's it.
All right, thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, please.
Parks and Rec did not meet in June.
Thank you. Police committee, please.
Police committee did not meet and Chief Keast is here.
Thank you. On the report, you'll see a theft. That was a theft of a credit card from a residence. Resident believes it was either taken by the cleaning company or a home health aide. Where they made a purchase of a little over a thousand dollars of clothing. We do have subpoenas out for surveillance video of the stores where these purchases were made. We're waiting for returns on those. We did start putting our new MDCs in the cruiser, in the cruisers. We did get one installed this month with the other three going in July seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, so we'll.
Chief, I'm sorry, what, what's being installed?
The MDCs, the in-car computers.
Okay.
Officer Davidson is now a certified field training officer. He attended class at Scarlet Oaks. And he will be, any new officers that come on, he will now take over the initial training of them. The officers last month, very proactive, made several stops where they seized numerous drugs, several weapons, firearms were taken off the streets. And they did approach some people lawyering in the village around some vehicles who they believed were getting ready to break into the vehicles, scattered them off. Our new officers, Jay Manning and Dorian Eaton, they're out of their FTO programs. They're both great assets and being very productive. And of, as the mayor said, Lieutenant Barber did receive his award. After the banquet, he was approached to join the CIT specialist team, which he is in the process of still speaking with them to, to join that team.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
We did not meet in June.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvement and Lights.
We did not meet in June.
This is easy. Utilities, please.
Utilities did meet in June. We, in that meeting, discussed the utilities financials briefly to see the status. But the primary part of the meeting was to talk about the continued option to use the Greater Cincinnati Water Works as a provider of water. And I, there was a lot of discussion about that. In that situation, there is a pending potential, not yet identified expense, considerable expense for a major repair to the water facility. And to better identify the, the, the timing and the actual cost of that potential replacement, a resolution was passed that David would con- would determine accurately the timing and potential cost of that replacement and how that would influence any particular, any decision at whether or not to move ahead or seriously consider the use of Cincinnati Water. We'll cover that in our next committee meeting. I have an update by then, I assume, and.
I, I don't know, frankly. This is unfortunately the first time hearing of this. But I will work with our engineers to come up with a number that will, that will, that will attempt to answer the question that's being asked.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, and we don't have that meeting scheduled yet, but sometime in July and closer to the beginning than the end. And that's the report.
Okay, thank you. Next is the treasurers' report.
I sent out my report to all members present here. The, the only thing I could point out is, I mean, just looking at interest rates, they're slowly going down. The differential between the interest rate that we get between checking and money market is about two point five percent right now. Money market is slowly going down, which my guess is might continue to do that. But we're, we're still on target for total investment for the year terms of revenues.
Okay. Very good, thank you. And the, is there a report from the clerk, fiscal officer?
Yes, yes. So in your packet, we're actually going to look at the paper tonight. So if you go to the financial statements, so it's dated July the seventh. Go to the very last page. So this is the end of a quarter. And so everything else in this packet is part of the monthly delivery that you guys receive from a financial standpoint. With the changes to the positions effective next year, I wanted to run through this quarterly report so that way you'll see it a couple more times before the end of the year. So the very end, this is the summary of what's happened to date. So the numbers, January through June are the actual numbers. And then July through December are estimates as best we know. So estimates of the income, including utilities and, you know, all the, all the things that we know about generally, the things that we know that we're paying, so debt service, anticipated costs like street repairs are in here. You'll see in September, it's, it's a million. So that is the fire truck and the work on Albion. So you're going to see what we know to be big placeholders here. And then where it says ending oper- operating liquid as, liquid available is the cash, cash position estimated at the end of each month. So, and these are, what's completed through June is their actual actuals. So they've been fully reconciled to the banking statements and that is the actual numbers there. And you'll see July through December. December, we are potentially in some serious issue because we don't have any of the investments coming due, which you would see under the purchase of new investments and the maturity, maturing of investments. That's part of the cash coming in. So we're going to have to do some, some maneuvering in December potentially as, as things are transitioning. So it'll be something that we all need to keep our head around. And remember, this is cash. This is not the funds. So this is the actual way that we're paying the bills and stuff, regardless of what the fund balances and stuff are. So, and that's important to keep the difference between cash and the funds in mind as we're looking at this. So the investment numbers are in here, so you can see the reconcile all assets in June was ten point seven million dollars. CDs was eight eight. The treasuries was six forty seven, six hundred and forty seven thousand. And our cash at the end was one point two three million dollars, which reconciles back up to the end of June. So you'll see that reconciliation all the way across every time. So if you want to see the, the details on the CDs and treasuries as to when things become, come due, that would be part of the investment ladder, and that's on the other side of Mike. So that would be the other Mike. So he would have that investment ladder and ultimately it will probably be all rolled in together.
Okay.
But that's a report that he manages.
That's a good report, so.
Yeah, so. And if you have any questions, I can actually answer questions on this, but I still recommend going to David and/or James.
There you go.
I mean, the, the, to be fair, the estimates going forward are estimates. And, you know, those estimates, if you go, go back to January, have varied by half a million, so. The, the good thing is that the village is in no position of, in default of anything.
And it can be manag- it can be managed.
Sure, yeah, but it, but the new position of council, when, when it becomes the new way, the new appointed fiscal officer, you'll have to have a much more active.
Fully, fully agree, that's, I think that's a. And also, to that point, is there some plan at some point to, I guess, notify the general public that there's a finance requisition potentially open by, before the end of the year?
It would be, yeah. It's open as of January one.
Right, right. And prior to that.
Prior to that, to let people know, yes, certainly.
And for council to agree on proper compensation for that individual? So that it reflects in the.
That would be part of the budgeting process.
Yeah, so it reflects on the budget, so.
Yeah.
And description, I mean, you, you.
In the budget.
Yeah, I mean, your description was a very good one.
Right.
Is that potential cost factored into the budget at this point in time?
It is factored into next year's budget.
In, into the consideration for next year's budget?
Well, it depends, I thought it was factored into what was.
No, the existing administrative staff.
Yes.
Is factored into next year's budget.
Correct.
If there are changes, then.
In addition to that, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Moving on then to new business, we covered ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty five. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty six, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the twenty twenty five appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. David, can you describe this one for us?
Certainly, before I do though, Mayor, I would ask if council would be amicable to a friendly amendment in section two, referring to the emergency action being necessary for available appropriations, not for critical police officer safety equipment, rather, but for necessary personnel expenditures.
Okay.
You see, I used the last month's emergency language here.
Yes, okay. So is there a motion for that change, for that friendly amendment?
So moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. This was discussed at the fire committee meeting earlier this month, or I guess last month. There are two increases in appropriations that are necessary to continue personnel expenses, personnel operations. For the fire department, the first is eleven thousand dollar increase to cover estimated workers compensa- or known workers' compensation costs through the remainder of twenty twenty five. Those were increased last year following a, or beginning of this year following an audit by workers' compensation of the village's dues. And then the second is a two thousand dollar increase to cover a, a bill from twenty twenty four that we received from TriHealth when they decided to change billing software for previously issued fired, new firefighter physicals. Then any, as we discussed the fire committee meeting, any additional money that would be needed would be found in the existing fire budget without increases. I have a meeting scheduled this month with the chief and with chief, Assistant Chief Lerman to, to do that work. So updates on that likely at the next fire committee meeting.
Okay, any questions on this for David? Is there a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty six, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty six, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes, thank you. Next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty seven, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the twenty twenty five appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. This particular ordinance is so, is for a donation of some baseball field equipment. David, can you tell us?
Certainly. An outside organization that does not wish to be named has donated or offered to donate a approximately eight thousand, eighty-five hundred, depending on the cost of the equipment, for a, what is a baseball field groomer. It, it combs the dirt, it combs the infield dirt. It also works, it also serves and works with gravel to cut weeds out from underneath gravel. It's kind of a jack of all trades in a lot of ways. It would be a significant improvement from our current equipment. It would be paid in full by this donation. So we do, we just do need to increase our appropriations in order to take advantage of that.
So any questions about this?
So I have a question about the process, but not the donation. I thought that there was some issues in citizens being able to donate stuff to the village for use for specific things.
Mm-hmm, yes, it has been, but.
So this is an outside organi- this is an organization, another charitable organization. It is not an individual, so there's no concerns about preferential services or anything like that with, with this group.
Good clarification.
Okay. Okay. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For ordinance 2025-37, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-37, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes, thank you. Next is ordinance 2025-38, an ordinance authorizing and granting consent to the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform resurfacing of portions of State Route Four and State Route 747 within the Village of Glendale and declaring an emergency. David, you referenced this before, but can you give us some more information on this?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is required by ODOT for us to enter into any agreements that they might have for the resurfacing of Congress Avenue and State Route Four in the village. Both the entire village portions of those roads will be resurfaced next year. It's fairly, it's, it's very wordy, but essentially is that the, the, ODOT will fund 100% of the cost for the rest, for the repair or the repaving of the road. Should the village request anything outside of that scope, we'll be responsible for the cost. We don't anticipate doing that, so no concern with that. But essentially, yeah, authorizing me to enter into any agreements that they may need to enter into through the course of work.
To resurface two of our roads. So, any questions about this ordinance?
Not, not about the ordinance. Question, David, do you remember there was a resident on North Congress that had come to the village complaining about access to her driveway based on how the pavement was positioned in front of her house or something like that? Is that something that...
I will ask, I will ask ODOT's engineers. I think that that came into play when they resurfaced the Springdale portion of 740, or, yeah, 747. But I'll, I'll send a message to them and see what they're...
Just because I know it's, it's gonna pop out, and I figure it's like, if we get ahead of that, it'd be better.
David, last week, when a huge hole was fixed... Yes. Is that, were we in charge of that? Yes. Yeah. But we use state money to pay for it, so it all goes around in a circle.
All right. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For ordinance 2025-38, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-38, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That ordinance passes. Last ordinance, or actually, it's a resolution, 2025-21, a resolution adopting the tax budget for the Village of Glendale for the calendar year 2026. You received the ordinance in the packet along with the proposed budget, or the tax budget. David, can you give us just the, a brief explanation why we have to submit this?
Go very quickly. The tax budget is an annual exercise that the village has to complete under state of Ohio requirements to essentially verify that the revenues that we receive from our tax levies are adequate and sufficient to cover our known, anticipated expenditures. It is an exercise in making sure that we're paying attention to the fact that we're getting money from them and from taxpayers and putting it towards a budget document. It does not have any bearing on the budget that we will work on later this year. We can stray from it essentially as far as we'd like. Not saying we will, but we could. And the increases in this document are a 3% for most things. There are a number that have a different calculation based on known things that happened in '25 or may happen in '26 to, to better, to come up with a more accurate number, but largely 3% increase across the board.
Okay. Very good. Any questions about this ordinance?
Was the public hearing well attended?
Well, two of the three audience members were council members, so. But yes, and I don't know, Mr. Briner, who was here previously, asked a question about personal services and salary costs. And a large part of the changes and the seeming increases in that are things that happened in '25 that we don't anticipate happening again in '26. But 3% was used for some of those to, to come up with a ballpark number for next year.
So, is there a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Oh, do we need a...
Okay. And a motion to dispense with three reads, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, we can call the roll.
For resolution 2025-21, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For resolution 2025-21, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That resolution passes, thank you. Finally, financial reports are distributed, the June 2025 financial report, and then second quarter 2025 liquid and investment reports. Is there acknowledgement of receipt of those reports?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
For adjourn?
Oh, yes.
I have a question, please. A topic that has come up routinely in council has been whether or not the village should change to a charter-type village. And I don't know where we stand on that at this moment, but it's something we should continue to consider. And could we get an update on where we are?
David, is there an update on this?
The charter process is one that can be initiated by council. There is the need to establish a charter committee, which is an exercise of the electorate in the ballot box, is, is voting of 15 members to essentially be tasked with creating a charter for the village. There were some discussions about it. I don't think that there's been anything of substance recently as far as, as far as moving that process along. Of course, it, you know, it's a, it's a matter of if council wants to initiate that process. There are some certain time requirements and restrictions of when it has to start because of, you know, notification before election dates and those sorts of things. We can, I know we have a memo, Kathy, I think you helped prepare a couple of years ago, that has some timelines and sort of things. We can update that for council's knowledge.
Recirculate that.
And recirculate that. And if there's interest in starting that process, that would be the best place to start.
What, and how, when you say if there's interest, how, is that an individual expressing that interest? Or is it something that's done by a, a motion or, or...
You know, laws and claims seems like the best committee for a case...
I agree.
To be reviewed.
Yes.
Have we done that formally, have taken that step, or is it...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's definitely interest. It's just the process is pretty onerous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to find 15 non-council members, non-governmental.
But elect them. Yeah. So, but we, if you wanna, you know, discuss, I mean...
We could take it up in next committee.
So, in, in the beginning of the year, when we had our retreat, there, I, I think we did touch on it, but there were no, it was never assigned, like, it was a task that was never assigned to any specific committee. I'm happy to put it on our agenda. I think we should have a July committee meeting. I mean, we have other things obviously to discuss, and I think that that's appropriate to, to at least, you know, get the ball rolling on, on the topic of how it should be done.
Correct. It sounds good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And one of the things that we had previously had was kind of like a non-exhaustive list of this sorts of things you would maybe consider putting in the charter. There are so many things, and you wanna nail down what, why you want the charter and what you want it to do for you. So, it is good to, to get that discussion going around.
I think that would be a good exercise for the laws and claims meeting, to come up with maybe, as we did at the retreat, right, a list of potential things that the charter could address, or, you know, change approach, change approach to, or that kind of thing. It could be a good exercise for council, get their arms around what, what happened.
Right. And the costs associated.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Challenges, benefits, whatever.
Yeah. Good old-fashioned SWAN analysis.
And I would offer review some of the charters or surrounding communities, because theirs are very, very simple in terms of what they've adopted versus what they chose to change, so. So, I think that's...
Might be good to get someone into...
Yes.
Like, you know, a little bit of testimony from someone who's been through the process, good and bad, so we know what we're getting into, if, if we go that way.
Good idea.
I mean, even though they adopted like 98% or 99% of the Ohio Revised Code and then changed this.
Changed a couple of things, yeah.
And I think a lot of them jumped on the bandwagon and whenever it was first an option, like 60s or 70s, so they've been doing it for a while. I'll quickly mention, too, with regard to the retreat, there was some discussion of interested in doing it more than once a year and doing it again in the late summer, early fall, so I just wanted to say out loud that if that's gonna happen, we should plan for it.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether it's a suggestion, I would suggest that that be put on the laws and claims committee for, you know, for continued act, action or discussion.
You're talking about the charter issue? Or are you talking about...
About the charter issue, yes.
How about the retreat? Okay, yeah, okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
We've, we've been through the...
I, I just need to get a point of order before your adjournment has nothing. I, I just need to get some understanding of the process of getting information based upon these committees.
Well, look, look, Mr. Parrish, if you're... If you're interested in getting further information, I can tell you the best place to start would be with Mr. Lumsden. And he can help direct you where you'd like, you know, in, information that you might be looking for.
But it's on the agenda. All I wanna do is, all I wanna do is ask for process, so that I can act upon process. If I don't know, then I have to go all over the place to try to, somebody answer a question for me. Now, I know we work on the Sunshine Law, is that correct? And, and here in our committee, in our council meeting, public comment is li- is limited to five minutes.
Yeah, we're, we're limited to five minutes, that's been for a while. But Mr. Parrish, I have to reiterate again, if you have questions about these types of things, your best first point of contact is Mr. Lumsden. We've had our public comment section already, and at this point, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Even though the meeting is adjourned, council...